Welcome, Vice Mayor and council members. I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for March 18th, 2024 to order. I ask Councilmember Tiedemann to read the land acknowledgement.
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of LaShawn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you, Councilmember Tiedemann. Moving on to the roll call, City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
And Mayor Mekki.
Here. There were no closed sessions today, so there is nothing to report back. Moving on to item four, ceremonial matters. And this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council, not other attendees, and respect each other, sorry, each person that has spoken. For those in the audience not speaking, we ask that you refrain from voicing your support or dissent. The council wants everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not to be intimidated by other comments or reactions. With that, we'll move on to ceremonial matter four dash one, proclamation, American Red Cross Month. Councilmember Jordan.
It is my pleasure to read this proclamation. In recognition of American Red Cross Month, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, when we recognize the compassion and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas the American Red Cross was founded in May 1881 by Clara Barton, and this year marks the 143rd anniversary of the Red Cross. And whereas the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act by providing compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. And whereas people have counted on the Red Cross for the information and skills they need to be safe at home, at work, at school, and at play, training people in life-saving skills in CPR, first aid, fire prevention, and water safety. And whereas with over 1,600 volunteers in Alameda County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 226 disaster operations in 2023, received 29,497 blood donations, and 1,161 blood drives from donors throughout Alameda County, and responded to 368 members of the armed forces. And whereas the American Red Cross installed 807 smoke detectors, and 232 homes made safer through the Home Fire Campaign, trained 12,177 individuals in first aid, CPR, and AED, and trained 3,116 people in aquatics and water safety. And whereas for over 100 years, United States Presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission, our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because it is not a government agency, the American Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Albany City Council does hereby recognize March 2024 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all of our community members to reach out and support the mission of the American Red Cross. And with that, I believe we have some folks here.
Thank you very much. My name is Jenny Arietta. I'm a very proud Albany resident. My husband Romeo and I live up on Alameda Hill. We've been here for about three years, and we love it. Also a very proud Red Crosser. I've been part of the organization since 2017. I love it, and there's nowhere else I would rather be. Albany and Alameda County are part of the Northern California Coastal Region of the American Red Cross. We're a 15-county region that goes as far north as Sonoma-Napa County, as far south as Monterey, and as far east as San Joaquin, Stanislaus, and Modesto Counties, and everywhere in between. So San Jose, Santa Cruz, the Greater Bay Area. So we're a large region, we're very populous, and by the fact that we're in California, we're also very disaster-prone. So earthquakes, tsunamis, wildfires, and as of the last couple of years, floods, lots of rain, floods, wind. So the Red Cross is extremely busy, and you just heard some really powerful stats that were read about our work in Alameda County. And that's in addition to responding to home fires every day, the daily preparedness work that goes into everything that we do to make sure that we're ready to respond to a disaster should it happen here in Alameda County, elsewhere in our region, or elsewhere across the country. All of that work is made possible largely due to our volunteers. Our volunteers make up about 90% of our workforce. They outnumber paid staff 12 to 1. So I can say as a staff member, it is a privilege to be part of a volunteer organization, which is why Red Cross Month is so important to us. President Franklin Roosevelt was the first person to declare Red Cross Month about 80 years ago and signed the Declaration of Red Cross Month nationally, as President Biden did also this year, and every president has done since. And really, it's a time to celebrate not only just the work the Red Cross does here in Albany, Alameda County, and beyond, but the great work that our volunteers do. So if there's anything I can leave you with tonight, I encourage you, if you want to get involved and help your community, consider volunteering. If you know someone who wants to get more involved, ask them to volunteer. If you're eligible to be a blood donor, please volunteer. Please, please donate blood. If you think you might ever need to use life-saving skills, skills that we hope we never have to use, but should something happen, we're glad we do have them, take a class, learn CPR, learn first aid. The Red Cross has been around for more than 140 years. We're working hard, we're working harder than ever because disasters are coming bigger, stronger, and more often. And we continue to need a lot of help. So I thank you all for your time. I thank you for recognizing Red Cross Month, and on behalf of the Red Cross, thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to get a picture?
Yeah, sure.
Is that all right, a group picture?
Would anyone, sorry, we'll take public comment real quick. Would anyone like to make any public comments?
I actually want to make a public comment.
Yes.
So I, I thank you for the Red Cross and the CPR course and everything else. I've put through many Girl Scouts through the Red Cross CPR course, and in fact, years and years ago, I actually saved a coworker of mine with the Heimlich maneuver that was taught to be by the CPR Red Cross course, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, so, thank you. Thank you for all the work you guys have done.
Of course.
Yeah.
Any online comments?
I just want to extend my thanks for the both of you being here this evening to receive the proclamation, but also acknowledge that recently at the mayor's conference, we had a very great and informative presentation from Hannah. And when I campaigned to run for elected office here, one of my platform was on things that I have expertise in, environmental science, climate change, and to hear the reality and the connectedness, the impact that climate change is having now on our ability to respond to disasters and, excuse me, the, the increase of cost of responding to natural disasters was mind-blowing to see the stats right in front of us. But many, many applause to both of you and all the other folks who I know volunteer tirelessly. It was eye-opening to also hear about the number of responses that folks deal with in Alameda County alone. I was not aware that when fires happened, or house fires happened, that typically local fire departments reach out to the American Red Cross to help with comforting folks who have been impacted, and I really appreciate just hearing that and being aware of that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Jordan.
Yeah, when I read the proclamation, I was, when I came to the number of disaster responses that occurred, I thought, truly, that must be California the nation, but realized, no, that's the county. And with pushing towards 400 responses with, I think, over, bit over 1,000 volunteers, I have to imagine several volunteers respond at least to each one, so that's, you know, many, many responses per year per volunteer. So I'm very grateful for the work.
I will add one other thing that I learned at the meeting we had last week from the Red Cross was, for those of you who are interested in donating blood, for every donation of blood, you save three lives. So the impact of donating blood can be huge, and in particular, we heard that for those of African-American descent or of Hispanic descent, it is very valuable to have blood drawn because for many of those populations, they have sickle cell, and having sickle cell is very important to have the right kind of blood, so. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to ceremonial item four dash two, Women's History Month.
In honor of Women's History Month and International Women's Day, whereas by congressional resolution, March was designated as Women's History Month in 1987, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have been, have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continued to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life, of the nation, of the nation by constituent, a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas women, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have been on front lines fighting for and securing equal rights and opportunity throughout our country's history as, I'm so sorry, I'm like, I was taking a nap earlier. Apologies. Civil rights leaders, suffragists, and labor activi, I am so sorry. Women continue to lead and as advocates for reproductive rights, champions of racial injustice, and LGBTQI and plus equality, and whereas throughout history, women have opened the doors of opportunity for subsequent generations to become community leaders, educators, doctors, scientists, childcare providers, first responders, and service members, innovators, entrepreneurs, and essential workers in every industry and more. And whereas women in Albany played a prominent role in our history, leading the movement for independence from Berkeley and incorporation, continuing to serve as elected officials on both the City Council and Board of Education, providing countless hours of volunteer service and serving in professional roles. And whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize the Albany High School Feminist Club for their ongoing commitment to learn about the history of gender discrimination, participate in discussions to bring awareness of the inequalities that exist today, and to advocate for equitable treatment, rights, and opportunities for women and girls in our community and on a broader scale. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, this Albany City Council does hereby recognize March 2024 as Women's History Month and Friday, March 8th, 2024, as International Women's Day in the City of Albany. Despite myself being tongue-tied so many times tonight, I am so sorry. But I believe that you guys are here, and I would love to present this to you. Thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
Hello, thank you for inviting us on behalf of Albany High School to receive the proclamation honoring Women's History Month. Albany High Student Body works to build an inclusive and diverse school environment where all women can thrive and reach their full potential.
We must remember all women who paved the way for the generations to come, while also looking beyond to how our generation can accelerate this ongoing fight. As we celebrate Women's History Month, we must remind ourselves of the importance of advocating for gender equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments from the room? Any online comments?
Hi, I just wanted to say I appreciate this proclamation, but most of all, I wanted to highlight, which I think the people from Albany High School did, but just to highlight that it's not equitable yet. Women don't earn as much, white women don't earn as much as white men, and black women earn even less, so we have a ways to go, but I appreciate the proclamation, and I hope that we will all continue to understand, understand the battle that we have ahead of us and continue to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name's Cameron Wu. I live in Berkeley. I frequently visit the Albany Bulb to walk there with my dog. It's a great facility, and thank you very much for maintaining it. It's, it's a great resource regionally. It's the parking lot there that is atrocious. There are huge potholes in the parking area piled up constantly with rainwater. And now they have restricted parking further by forbidding street parking on the south side of the street alongside of the racetrack, which makes it harder for people to park there and thus go to this great facility. There are parking patrols constantly and parking tickets issued even on rainy, really rainy days, which is rather absurd, actually. So I just want to remind you, because I can understand if the commissioners or the City Council do not go there as much as park users go there, but people go there and they see no parking and they wait for minutes and, you know, a long time, and they turn around and they leave. So please remedy this by fixing up the parking spaces there and adding more parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We will add those to our notes under the good of the city portion of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Would you like a picture?
Sure.
Moving on to item five of our agenda, City Manager's Report. City Manager, may the council have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to focus on our e-news this evening. It has a wealth of information in it for this last Friday, and also walk through a reminder about e-news and how to subscribe to it. It is very simple, www.albanyca.org/e-news, and you will receive information about the city directly to your inbox. As you have on your agenda this evening, later in the evening, the Housing Advisory Commission is established, pending membership, which will be subject to review and approval by the City Council. We are actively working on distributing information about this. Thus far, you will see it at all city facilities as well as online, and also the school district and University Village. So we will continue to promote this information. That's just the beginning of the outreach. Looking forward to receiving applications and encourage those interested to please apply. We have a running deadline for initial review, as noted there, of March 29th. However, that will be ongoing, of course, until the group is filled as directed by the council. A reminder that we also have a couple of other advisory body vacancies, Arts Committee as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. These are important roles to get filled with a lot of work underway in both of those respective bodies. So again, you can please fill out the application online and of course, reach out to our City Clerk with any questions. Exciting news for those that are pickleball advocates. I'm learning more about the sport myself, but it's finally happening, and I really just wanted to express appreciation to the pickleball community for their patience, as I know this project took quite some time to get together, and it's incredibly encouraging to see it's very much underway in the next month or so. So look forward to the changes at Ocean View Park. Want to underscore that tennis courts will remain, and so these will be shared spaces. If you are seeking an internship, I couldn't think of a better one than the opportunity to be outdoors and learn from our expert staff regarding Albany Hill and also other sustainability issues and open space. Valuable learning applied to perhaps what you're studying. This is a wildlife resilience program through funding from the State Coastal Conservancy, and the opportunity remains available, so please apply online, and looking forward to having that next set of energy within our Public Works Department. We have a cleanup schedule. This is our Friends of Albany Parks Program that has been re-amplified after a hiatus during COVID, and this cleanup program is encouraging our community to get involved in our local parks. Pick your favorite park, pick your neighborhood park, each park will have an event. This is a great opportunity to connect with city staff and also the community at large in caring for our outdoor spaces. A reminder that spring break is right around the corner, April 1st, and our Community Services Department will have a camp for children looking for something to do that week, so please take that opportunity up if that fits your needs. And also a reminder on our call for artists for the murals project along the BART pillars. This was released in February and remains open through May, and the Arts Committee will take the lead on receiving that information and next steps. And lastly, the San Pablo Pedestrian Improvement Project is forthcoming, began today on the west side of San Pablo Avenue near Garfield Avenue. Construction is expected to take place at this location through March 25th. So please be advised that emergency and local access will be maintained at all times, and lane closures will be permitted from 9:00 to 3:00 on San Pablo Avenue. As part of the same project, work is expected to begin near Portland Avenue on March 26th and be completed on April 2nd. Updates will be posted on our website again, under the Construction Alerts page, which is a very live and active page with updates, which Public Works is really focused on maintaining, to which I appreciate. This project may have some traffic impacts, so please be aware of that issue. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. If anyone attending would like to ask a question or comment about the City Manager's Report, please raise your hand in the audience or raise your hand online. Not seeing anyone inside the council chamber, if we could go on to online comments.
Hi, I, I do have a comment. I was gonna wait until the item came up, but since the City Manager mentioned it, the publicity for the Housing Advisory Commission is, has happened, it's true. One, if there's a flyer, in the community center, there's flyers that have a little bit of color on them that are in with all the plastic holders. They're not, not, don't draw attention at all. There's a great flyer there that's Albany Community Expo. It's more like a poster. It's huge, it's bright, it's colorful, attracts your attention. The flyers that are there for the, for the commission are not, do not attract attention. There's also a large board, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in Albany, that has a Women's History thing, I think, and it is to be the, for last month, there was something else, but it takes up a minuscule part of that, and if we put flyers on there about this event, about the commission, and put little arrows on it, basically, this is about equity, diversity, inclusion, because this is about the housing element, and this is about making Albany a welcoming, inclusive place to live, and that's what the housing element is about. So I'd really like to see a step up on the, on the publicity for this, and unfortunately, the, the commission that what would have done the advertising, this was sunsetted last year or the year before last, and so there is no, nothing in Albany that actually goes out and does this kind of thing actively except the staff, and I know it's a small staff. So I would encourage you maybe just have, as part of this, this project, is to have volunteers from the community who go out and let people know. I know I've gone off of my minute, but this is really important, and it really needs a lot more publicity. Also, the quarter sheet that gets put in there with the eight-point font is just basically invisible, and it's not really drawing, the one that's on the plastic holder outside of the community.
Thank you for your comments.
All right.
Any comments or questions from council?
Might add one other item. They caught my eye, and wanted to report to the council. So the Berkeley Scanner had an article. It reported that police and firefighters from Berkeley, Albany, UC Berkeley, and the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory took part in training from Florida-based C-3 pathways regarding active shooter and other complex incidents. And the scanner relays, in one of the most complicated scenarios, trainers said Berkeley and Albany first responders had set a record for handling the incident quickly and with the fewest casualties they had seen. So I just wanted to recognize all the first responders who were involved and thank them for undertaking that training. It may seem extreme, but there was actually an active shooter incident in Albany, unfortunately, not too long ago, so it is something that, that they have to train and pace for.
I wanted to just thank staff for all the hard work that they've done on the pickleball courts. As a person who has just learned the rules relatively recently, I'm really excited about it. I also want to really thank all the hard work that the Parks Rec and Open Space Commission did on that, because I know that that was very much a collaboration with our staff. So very excited to hear that news. So very excited to hear that news. Not seeing any other comments, we'll move on to item six, Go to the City. Go to the City, this is for attendees to provide council comments, information, and questions on items that are not on the agenda. Please raise your hands in the room or raise your hands online if you wish to speak. Oh, can we go, can we go two minutes on comments? Sorry. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the Council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff for comments. Please, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Tamiko Panzella, Albany resident. Just wanted to thank the Council for approving the ceasefire resolution subcommittee last meeting, and thank the subcommittee for your time. Since the last council meeting two weeks ago, over 1,000 people have been murdered in Gaza. So there's no time to waste. So thank you in advance for moving quickly on this, and we're looking forward to seeing the very strongly worded resolution up for vote soon. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, hi. Yeah, you guys know me by now, that's what I'm gonna say. But yeah, I also wanted to kind of echo Tamiko's words and thank you guys. Starting from you, Vice Mayor Lopez, for like, for early on, you were expressing your public support. And then you, Mayor Mickey, for forming, or like, yeah, forming the subcommittee. And then you, Councilmember Jordan, and Councilmember Tiedemann, and all of you guys for supporting the subcommittee. And then, yeah, you two, Councilmember Tiedemann and Dawn Mickey, for all your time. I know you've had lots of meetings about this, for taking the time to this. And then, yeah, and I wanted to also just, yeah, just reiterate the urgency of this. So like, we can, yeah, as soon as possible, get the meeting on the calendar. That would be great. Yes, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Not seeing any online comments, move on to item seven, Consent Calendar. Sorry, I'm supposed to read a bunch of that. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and would be enacted by one motion. By approval of Consent Calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. First, looking to Council, are there any items that you would like to discuss? Looking to the Council Chamber, are there any items that people would like to comment on? Any online commenters? Not seeing any items being pulled, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Seconded.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item eight, Presentations. Item eight-one, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Annual Audit of the Fiscal Year 2022-23.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Raina Schwartz, your interim Finance Director. Cassie Murphy, our Finance Manager, will provide a brief overview, I believe, before our external auditor Sheldon Shivan starts his presentation. But actually, with that, I'm actually just gonna turn it directly over to Sheldon, and you're welcome to either be at the public comment podium or at the side podium here. All right.
Just in case. Hey, look, it's on for me. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see everybody. Appreciate you letting the auditor come and speak to you, not at you, because that's what I prefer to do. So here we are for the June 30, 2023 Audit History Lesson, right? History lesson. I see that you're getting your first quarter budget report tonight. Read through that, looks pretty good. But we'll talk about that next year. So, on to the show. This is a quick overview of the audit process. I'm sure everybody here is familiar with that. The idea behind this is to give you a summary of what we kind of do in five seconds that takes nine months. So, in essence, what we have is a four-phase process. And within that process, the key factors are the risk assessment and planning, which has to do with the internal control documentation, gaining an understanding of controls, and then identifying significant transaction classes for testing, right? So we're assessing risks based on our internal control documentation and the testing that we do. And as we move forward, after we've assessed risks and we've developed that audit plan, we go through the execution phase, which has to do with the substantive testing, the compliance testing mostly. Now, the way that we look at it from an audit standpoint historically is that Phase One is that interim audit that we come out during the March through June months, and we perform that internal control and risk assessment work. Phase Two is really where we're out there for a year end during the September through November audit work. Now with COVID, that's expanded. It's gone from September through April of the next fiscal year for a lot of our clients, which we're fixing, finally, and this year we're catching back up. And so it's nice to see that most of our clients this year were actually on time. Now, with that, we're here to do the audit reporting and follow-up, right? So Phase Three and Four really go together. Phase Three is the, you know, reporting of the ACF, reporting of the management letters, coming to the Council, coming to the finance committees. And it's also before that, working with your team to finalize the audit reports, right? And the financial statements. We add Phase Four in there just in case something comes up. So did you have any follow-up questions at every single level? This is that final level. Next slide, please. What standards do we follow? We follow the generally accepted auditing standards in the United States of America. We follow generally accepted governmental auditing standards. With governmental auditing standards, we are required to do a little bit more reporting in terms of management letters and communication of deficiencies, passed-on adjustments, things of that nature. Our objective in the audit is to express an opinion on the financial statements. It's easy, simple, right? No big deal. Except that, if you look at the ACF and how many pages that it contains inside that reporting package, you'll see that there's multiple opinion units. Not just one opinion unit, there's multiple opinion units. You actually have two sets of financial statements, government-wide, governmental fund. Then you add the proprietary fund statements, that's three sets. And then if you have fiduciary fund statements, that's four. So when you start looking within the governmental fund, you actually have specific opinion units. So, our objective is to issue a, issue an opinion on those financial statements, including all those opinion units, and let the readers know whether or not we believe that those financial statements are free of material misstatement as of June 30, 2023. And so from doing that, we have some responsibilities, right? One of those responsibilities has to do with reasonable assurance. We provide a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, not absolute. Why? Well, we can't test everything, right? We'd have to be here all year. We do test at a very high level of confidence. Our testing is about 90%, right? A level of confidence. That doesn't mean we test 90% of everything. That just means we have a 90% level of confidence in the way we develop our audit testing. And so therefore, it's a reasonable assurance, not absolute. Of course, we talked about risk-based, we've talked about materiality. Materiality is a concept that has evolved over the years. The standards have tried to define that so that auditors have good guidance to follow. The standards really have developed to let the auditors maintain their judgment but still consider what other people besides auditors might think something might be material, what might, what materiality actually is. And so that definition has evolved. So when we're determining materiality, it starts with the quantitative and finishes with the qualitative, right? So what's, what might be significant to a reader? But ultimately, auditor's judgment's involved, standards are involved. Internal controls, we discussed that and how we review, document, and test those. Really the basic starting point for us to do our risk assessment. Next slide, please. Just an overview of the ACF. And what you'll find in here is something that is, and an ACF is an annual comprehensive financial report, for those that don't know. Used to be comprehensive annual financial report, but had to change the acronym to be more politically sound. And in that ACF, you will find Section One, which is introductory, not audited, by the way. Section Two, financial, that's almost all audited, not quite. The MDNA is not audited by us, although it contains audited numbers. So we do perform procedures related to those numbers. We make sure they take and tie, we go through the MDNA, we review that. We provide templates to, to our clients as well, to help them get going. The supplementary information section is audited. The required supplementary information section, technically, we do not issue an opinion on that, right? But it includes audited information. So same, same concept to that as it is with the MDNA. And of course, the financial statements and the notes are audited. Section Three, the statistical section, does not, it is not audited. But again, it includes audited information. Now, mind you, you've got 10 years of information, so we didn't audit all of that information, right? So we do not issue an opinion on the statistical section. We specifically have a paragraph in the opinion letter that says we do not issue an opinion on that. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of the Statement of Net Position as of 6/30/2023 versus 6/30/2022. The key thing to keep in mind is this is that government-wide presentation, right? A little moth wanted to join. And in that government-wide presentation, you get to see something that you don't get to see throughout the year, and that is your current assets plus your long-term assets, and your current liabilities plus your long-term liabilities. And then we throw in some fun stuff like deferred inflows and deferred outflows, but nobody cares about those yet. The key takeaway from this slide would be to look at those non-current liabilities, right? And you can see that from June 2022 to June 2023, you have a spike in there, more significant than any other change from one, from any of the other major areas in the Statement of Net Position. And so the bottom line is net, the net pension liability has fluctuated. So in June, in the June 30, 2021 fiscal year, you had a net pension liability, geez, can't remember the dollar amount. First time I've done that, actually, I usually remember all three years. Bottom line is 21, you had a next, a dollar amount that was a significantly higher than June 30, 2022. That went back up by $16 million in June 30, 2023, right? So you're gonna see this weird chart with a pension liability, always is going up, unfortunately, then all of a sudden a dip, and then back, right back up. So what happened there was that the CalPERS Pension Plan had estimated the investment returns in the fiscal year June 30, 2022 less than they actually realized in the plan. So therefore, that caused that net pension liability to drop. That flipped in the June 30, 2023 fiscal year. So now you have earnings that came in less than they estimated. So that caused that net pension liability to go back up. Not to mention, they changed some of the assumptions. So for example, the discount rate goes down, the liability goes up. So that accounts for that non-current liabilities and that increase, that spike right back up. We did expect that to happen, right? You could see it coming because the pension plans, the actuarial studies are done one year behind the audit reports and the ACFs. Next slide, please. A quick look at government revenue. The most important bar to pay attention to in this slide would be the taxes. You can see the COVID impact here, right? You can see taxes are coming back up, sales, use taxes. Property tax value is still doing good, still going up. So the tax collection is really by far the most significant revenue for the city. Next slide, please. Total expenses by function. So we could spend a lot of time on this one, but we won't, unless you have questions. And the reason is that this is, again, government-wide approach, right? This is not your governmental fund expense expenditures. This is your government-wide expenses in your Statement of Activities, right? And the key here is to note that that general government expenses went up while the police and fire went down. And of course, your recreation community services went up. Community development relatively the same. Now here's the point. Depreciation expense has a significant impact on that conversion from your fund expenditures to your government-wide expenses. The largest impact can be seen in the general government and somewhat in fire and police. However, the impact from the pensions had a more significant impact on police and fire, and therefore you see that drop, right? Because there you had pension credits in those plans. And so those pension credits are causing those Statement of Activities expenses by function to fluctuate. So that's the direct impact from those pension plans, is you see these weird fluctuations in your expenses. In the government-wide, you won't see that in the government fund directly until the annual required contributions are impacted. Then you'll start to see that. Next slide, please. The audit results. Unmodified audit opinions. So keep in mind, as I mentioned earlier, all the standards we follow. Multiple opinion units, we did not have any modifications. We did not find any material weaknesses to be reported. We did not have any disagreements with management. I might have got yelled at a little bit to get things moving a little faster, but that was fine. Did not have any material passed-on adjustments. Of course, a passed-on adjustment is, again, based on auditor definitions and standards. It's a materiality concept where we identify a threshold that we can pass on, right? We don't have to worry about it, it's not, it's not gonna be significant. And then controlled deficiencies. So we've had some controlled deficiencies, and we've been working with the city on improving those controlled deficiencies. In our opinion, in what we've seen this fiscal year and the steps that the city has taken to implement the recommendations and even implement beyond the recommendations, I think, I, I think that we're seeing some progress there. So while we did have some significant deficiencies, and while there's, there is still some of those deficiencies actually still carry over from prior years, we've seen progress in that area. And so I feel confident that with the team that you've built internally now that you're gonna see more progress towards that in fiscal year '24. Of course, you know, it's up to me as an auditor to come in and objectively report on what we see. Our main goal is the financial statements. Our secondary goal is, hey, we see something that might create a material weakness or could lead to a material finding or a material misstatement in your financials. And so we're looking at that, and we're gonna objectively report on that. And so hopefully, in fiscal year '24, as we start that process, we'll see that, yes, indeed, those improvements that we started to see continue to, to occur. So overall, I think it was a pretty good audit. Any questions, comments, concerns?
None from Council.
Thank you very much.
Checking with staff, or is that the conclusion of presentation for eight-dash-one? Perfect. So we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience would like to make a public comment? Not seeing anyone in the chamber, anyone online?
Judy? Go ahead. Judy, go ahead and send your comments to citycouncil@albanyca.org. Thank you. That's it.
Bringing it back to Council, any Council comments?
I'd just like to thank Financial Department staff and the auditor for all your work, and congratulate you on continuing to head in the right direction. Thank you.
I'll just echo that, and especially considering that we have an interim finance director. And so I don't imagine that that made this process easier. So I very much appreciate all the work that went into it. Thank you very much.
Not seeing any more Council comments. Since this was a presentation only, I think we can move on to item eight-dash-two, Fiscal Year 2023-24 Second Quarter Budget Review and Mid-Year Update.
All right, thank you. Again, I'm Raina Schwartz, your interim finance director. And a huge thanks to Cassie and to Sheldon, our auditor. He was also very patient as I came in and asked eight trillion questions and tried to catch up on the process. But I agree that we are headed in the right direction. And I do think that the, the comments that we've gotten in terms of areas that we need to improve on, we are committed to making the improvements we need to. And so we're already on a, a good track to have our FY '24 audit be even more And so we're already on a good track to have our FY '24 audit be even more successful, I think, than the FY '23 audit. So I'm, I'm really pleased to be able to report that and to kind of kick off, believe it or not, we're already working on next year's, this year's audit as we go forward. So it's never a dull moment in the finance department. My purpose this evening is to provide you a brief, high-level update on your general fund for the second quarter and mid-year way through the fiscal year. As you can see in the report and as you're aware of from your own experience, expenditures and revenues do not flow evenly across the course of a fiscal year. They don't come one twelfth at a time every month. That would make life so much easier, but we end up having to figure out exactly how we're going to get from here to there regardless. So halfway through the fiscal year, while some of those uneven expenditures and revenues have calmed down somewhat, it still isn't 100% halfway through the fiscal year. And so following up on the first quarter budget review, this quarter as well, we looked at where were we last year at this halfway point? And so how does that compare with where we are this year at the halfway point? Last year, at this point, revenues were about 48%. Expenditures were at about 54%, 55% of budget. So we looked at where are we relative to those things in terms of this year's budget? So on the revenue side, we have a couple of key items. One is that although our sales tax revenues look to be a little bit farther behind this year, we also only received five months of that sales tax revenue before the December 31st date. We actually didn't receive from the state our sales tax payment for December until early February. It's often at a lag. That's not a surprise, but it does mean that we don't always get them on a monthly basis going, going forward. If we take into account that we have now received not only the sixth month, but the seventh month of sales tax revenues, we look like we're more or less on track to meet the budget estimate. So this takes a hard look at where we were at the, having received five months, but if we look at the full six-month and in fact, a little bit ahead at that seventh month that we've received, we do look like we're more or less on track to, to meet that sales tax revenue number. The other major change on the revenue side is a quirk of timing that has to do with our transfers in from other funds. So many revenues are deposited directly into the general fund. Some revenues are transferred into a special fund like the pension tax override fund and then transferred into the general fund to pay expenses out of. At this point in time, we often don't do those transfers until near the end of the fiscal year. And so it looks like we're wildly out of line with halfway through the fiscal year, but that, that was true last year at this same point in time, and it's true this year at this same point in time. It isn't surprising that we haven't received or haven't made those transfers. It is something we're looking at as to whether we should perhaps consider a different approach in the future, as to whether we should make those transfers on a more consistent basis or at least more than once a year in order to even some of that out over time. So that's more a function of timing than it is really a function of actual financial health or otherwise. So again, the comparison from last year to this year is still valid because we were in a similar situation where we'd only received a portion of those transfers. And I don't expect that to be a major issue going forward with respect to the total amount of transfers that will come in. I do think it's still reasonable to have a moderately cautious approach around revenues. We want to make sure that as the overall economic health in the region and in the state from a sales tax perspective, that is starting to soften a little bit according to the folks who spend all their time looking at sales tax revenues. So we should be cautious about how we think about those sales tax revenues. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves. And if revenues don't pick up, we could be, as we head farther into the fiscal year, be a little closer to either breaking even or realizing a deficit that has been potentially identified in the budget but hasn't been realized in the past. So we're watching that very closely, and as we head toward the third quarter report, we will be looking at that and taking a look at estimating, projecting where we will be at year-end with the goal of really getting an understanding of are we on track or not? After three quarters, we'll have a much clearer picture of what this fiscal year is going to look like as we, as we get toward the end. The one other thing I'll say about rev, on the revenue side is that as we look toward FY '25, we have two items that are somewhat concerning and will be challenges for us on the sales tax side. The first is the closure of Golden Gate Fields. So Golden Gate Fields is a major property tax, special property tax and sales tax generator. On the sales tax side, as soon as they stop running a business, even if they still own the property, we will see a sales tax drop. Between that and the closure of the Kelly Moore Paint Store, which was one of our major sales tax producers, we could see the loss of $100,000 to $200,000 a year in sales tax revenue. So we're, again, watching that very closely. We work with a company that, that does the analysis of all of the sales tax factors, and we'll continue to watch that to make sure that we have an understanding of what that's going to look like for the FY '25. On the expenditure side, it's a much more boring picture, yay. And that is to say that the departments are generally doing a good job of staying within budget. They are typically very good at that. They watch it, and we appreciate that effort on, on their part. The majority of the expenditure side is made up of salaries. Labor costs are by far the largest component of our budget. What that means is to the plus side, when there are vacancies, we have savings. Yay, we're not spending as much. Boo, we don't have as many people to provide services to the community. And so, again, it's a, it's a bit of a balancing act and, and, you know, the departments do a very good job of following up and maintaining service levels, but that's a, that's a balancing act between the budgetary impact and the service impact. And so it's always like, okay, let's, what's the right balance between those two things? As I mentioned earlier, in terms of continuing to improve our financial reporting to the council, with the third quarter report, we will be looking at doing an estimate of where we believe we'll be at year-end based on three-quarters worth of expenditures and revenues. That will give a much clearer picture about where we are overall with the health of the budget. I also anticipate that staff will be bringing back to the council in the May-June timeframe any adjustments that are needed for the FY '24 year, so to finish out this year, so we make sure we stay within budget. But also, any adjustments that are potentially needed for the FY '25 fiscal year. Because the budget was adopted as a two-year budget, we will likely need to make some adjustments to the FY '25 as we know a lot more now than we did a year ago, or at that point, it'll be almost a year ago, from when that budget was adopted. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Thank you, and thank you. I don't expect that you would know this offhand, but do you know what the sales tax revenue was for December when it came in in February?
I do. Well, I don't know, but I have it on a handy-dandy piece of paper, which I can tell you. So the main sales tax, which is the 1% number for December, was $232,997.
Interesting.
A half cent was $126,160.
Wait, there's a 1% and a half percent?
Yes. So the statewide jurisdictions get the 1% sales tax. We have a half-cent Albany transactions and use tax. That's that other piece.
Okay. And I was like, wait, when did that 1% Albany tax sneak in?
No, 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 1%.
I understand.
Everybody.
Pass-through from the state, yeah. I'm sorry. So I got tripped up on that. So the numbers were, if you could say again?
$233,000 and $126,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City clerk, could we put page three up again? Yeah, so just, yeah. Okay, so we had about 350, 330, I can't remember the exact numbers you just gave us. But so we are not as big as the whole as, as this, these numbers are showing us here. Is that what you're, since December was not included in what was sent to us before?
That's correct. If you took the six-month number, you'd bring that 230 up to, instead of 230 below, you'd be a little bit above, 100 above.
A quick question for you. Transfers in. How complicated would it be to switch to a more frequent transfer, transfer ins of the funds? Or is there an additional cost to actually switching to do it more frequently than just once a year?
There's no real additional cost for changing the methodology. I would say that for the single biggest transfer in, which we have, is from the pension tax override, that would be very easy to move to a twice a year, three times a year, four times a year. Some of the other transfers in are more dependent on revenues that come in that are perhaps slightly less predictable than the pension tax override, and that we would probably not want to do more than maybe twice a year, but we could certainly, we're looking at whether we should do that twice a year from those other funds. And in fact, we'll be talking to public work staff, for example, later this week about, okay, you know, help me understand exactly what the timing on some of those are to see if we can make those, those changes to move them into a more regular transfer. But there aren't so many of them that it's a, a big burden. It's a, there's only a handful of them.
Thank you.
I, I'm just curious if maybe you have any additional, like, you know, recommendations or other thoughts, knowing that you've, knowing you've had much vast knowledge in many different areas. I'm just curious to hear your thoughts and, and see what you, what recommendations you may have for us.
Thank you for asking that and not saying that I'm old, because I've been working for a long time, but I have a lot of experience. I'm going to take that as wisdom. We're going to go down the wisdom path. But I, I think there are a couple of areas of just clarity in the budget document, for example, where I think we can put together some tables that perhaps give you better summary information in a way that's easier to find. That's an area that I struggled with a little bit coming in as a new person. So I think that's an area that we'll be looking at. And then we'll also be looking at this notion of budgeting a deficit potentially. And, you know, there are other ways to handle that that I've either implemented in other jurisdictions or seen in other jurisdictions that I think, again, can help clarify what a, a more well-rounded picture of the city's financial health is from a budget standpoint. So there are a couple of those kinds of things where in the document and in how we report certain things, that I think we can make work better for staff, for the council, and for the community, and for our FAC. Our FAC was very appreciative as we've been continuing to try to increase these, the way that we're presenting information. So we will also continue to work in that, in that regard and, and get their feedback on that.
Great. Thank you so much.
I have perhaps the converse question to, to the mayor, which is, rather than increase the frequency of transfers in, could the estimate at each quarter be tuned to historical practice? So that the estimate for, this quarterly report was about 48%, if I calculated correctly, of the budgeted. And so it wasn't half. And so I don't know why, you know, how it was estimated, but it seems like if it could be estimated based on the historical, around 12%. And that would make the numbers that have the mid-year come out more like what they've been in the past. So curious to hear you talk about those two different options of practice.
That would also address it, as would in a similar fashion, other than the first quarter, where it's very hard to estimate what the rest of the year is going to look like. But with the mid-year and certainly third quarter to look at doing a projection of what we think the year-end is going to be. So for example, on transfers, we can tell you day one that we think will be at, you know, 90, 95% of the, the transfer budget based on all that history. So what we compare against with our actuals can also be tailored, either by doing a year-end projection or by changing that methodology. That 48%, as I said, was based on what was done in the first quarter, which is to look back at last year and say, how far were we? And apply it equally to all of the categories. So we'll continue to refine that, but that is the other piece, right? So you're comparing two things. So you can either change how you're projecting it, or you can change what you're comparing it against.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other council comments or, sorry, questions. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone in the room want to, no one in the room, so anyone online?
I'm Gregory Bone, and I'm a city of Albany retiree from the police department. And I'd like to speak tonight about the Financial Advisory Committee, the FAC, which has had a hand in shaping the financial reports you're viewing tonight. I attended the FAC meeting two weeks ago and watched for some two hours, and later was introduced to our newest acquisition, the Queen of Doom. Her words, not mine. Of course, I'm speaking about our new interim finance director, Raina Schwartz. What an absolutely amazing individual the city has retained for this temporary position. I was able to walk, walk, watch her walk through the latest act fur and budget update with absolute ease, and what a nice way she had about her interchanges with the committee. Ms. Schwartz demonstrated an amazing grasp of the city's financial system, condition, and potential issues going forward, and just interacted in such a human way with the committee. And I think council is obviously, obviously seeing the same thing tonight that I saw two weeks ago. I also want to compliment Cassandra Murphy, our finance manager. I watch her exchanges also with the FAC, and she has some such positive qualities and such good interaction with the committee that I want to make the council aware of that also. I don't know that Ms. Schwartz lived up to her billing tonight as Queen of Doom. She's far more upbeat than I anticipated, but I think that's probably a good takeaway, a good thing tonight. My second point is that I've watched and tried to be a positive contributor to the work of the FAC for the past several years. I cannot speak highly enough of the individuals on this committee and the work they have done for the city. These are highly functioning adults, and they take their work very seriously. I'd like to suggest that as a way of recognizing the FAC's good work and also as a benefit to the city, that the committee be offered one representative seat at the decision table for the hiring of the next financial director. We charge this good committee with reviewing financial documents and advising council on long-term financial planning. The implication of this is that a good working relationship with the new finance director is of paramount importance. If the committee has a seat at the table during the selection process, this would go a long way to ensuring a good competent person is selected and that there's good chemistry between the two entities. Thank you for allowing me to comment tonight.
Thank you for your comments.
We also have a member of the public who's having technical difficulty, and her question is, could you address the challenges and advantage of a monthly close of financials?
I'd be happy to address that. It harkens back more so to the annual financial report, but certainly budget is, is quite related to that. Having a monthly close is a great idea, and we are moving forward to implement that. Having a monthly close is a great idea, and we are moving forward to implement that. It's not particularly challenging, it's a question of getting the process put in place, and then having it in place so that even if you have turnover in staff, or even if you have some other disruption, you still know exactly where you are in that process. And so it's, you know, it, it allows potential, you know, a misentry of data that gets coded to the wrong account line. You find that much more quickly when you have a formal month-end close process in place, and so tho- those are the kinds of things that have been picked up in prior findings that the auditor referred to, and it's one of the recommendations essentially that comes out of that finding, is to have a month-end close, so we catch those things more quickly. That sets you up for a more effective and efficient year-end close, and so it is by far one of the, I wouldn't say it's one of the easiest things we can do, but it's certainly one of the most foundational things that we can do, and in fact, Cassie and I were talking about it this morning, and in already working to, to get that checklist set up and starting to work through that process. That will hopefully allow us to make the FY twenty-four audit, which we're inching toward the end of the FY twenty-four year, will allow us to make that a, a more smooth process as well, so I hope that addresses the question that came in.
With that, I'll come back to council for any comments or discussion.
Yeah, I'll just comment from, from my ignorance, and so I'll probably ask to meet with staff to understand this better, but looking forward to the fourth quarter report. Looking at the fourth quarter report for last year, the actual was one-point-eight million revenue over expenditures, and if I understand the Act for correctly, I think it was two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars revenue behind expenditures, and so I don't understand the relationship between these two, these two documents, and I've tried a little bit, but it's not my area of expertise, so.
Yes, so that, the adjusting entries and some of the adjustments that need to do as part of the audit process, those are the reasons why, when giving the fourth quarter report, we tend to caution against allocating anything or making any decisions with fund balance before the audit is complete. So there were a significant number of adjusting entries that we had to do during the fiscal year twenty-three audit, that were uncovered during the October onsite visit, and that did lead to a difference in where we were when we, when I presented the quarter four versus the final for the Act for.
So, is it a fair characterization that we actually did realize some deficit? Is that what I'm understanding from the Act for?
I believe so, right Rena? Yeah.
I'll have to go back and look at the, the actual table that I'm thinking of where that shows up. It, overall expenditures and revenues were, were close, but they weren't anywhere near the one-point-eight to the positive that it looked like initially. To loop back to what we were just talking about with a month-end close, I will say that with a month-end close process, we shouldn't end up with a discrepancy of that size that comes out as a result of the audit. That's one of those things that when we don't have a well-defined process throughout the year, we end up making a lot of adjustments all at once, as opposed to catching them quickly and being able to report on them more quickly. So yes, we had a, a mild deficit, if you will, across those numbers for the FY twenty-three year, that you absolutely did not see at the quarter four report, in part because we needed to catch up with some of those adjustments, particularly the adjusting entries that came out of the FY twenty-two audit.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it was less than a percent, but nonetheless, it underscores what has been said for years, so I want to make sure I understood that, that correctly, of what might be coming. Yeah, and I did see that the tables of adjustments, not that I understood them, but there was a couple ta, a couple pages of those adjustments, so, yeah, anyway, thank you very much for your work, thank you for the explanation.
Any additional comments from council? Thank you for your report. We will move on to item nine, Public Hearing, nine-one, New Solid Waste Collection Service Agreement and First Amendment to the Disposal Agreement with Waste Management of Alameda County.
Thank you, Mayor Mickey. If you will bear with me for a moment or two, I'll need to log into this computer, and so I can have a, run a slide presentation for you, so just give me a minute or two. I was gonna be shocked if nobody was here from your organization. Bear with me, it'd be another minute or two. Okay, go ahead, and if you can run it, go ahead. Oh, so, let, get myself organized here. Good evening, Jeff Bond, the Community Development Director, I'd like to do a brief introduction. The collection and disposal of solid waste is a very important service, unfortunately, it's also a very expensive service, and we recognize that we're not taking lightly the, the recommendation we're bringing to you this evening, that's embedded in the new agreements will involve an increase in rates, and that, those are, we'll go through the details of that, and it's, it's detailed much more in the staff report. We began working on updating these agreements about four years ago, we even have made several progress reports to this council over that time, and in particular, the last year or two, we have been working with the consulting firm of, of R3, who are subject matter experts in helping cities manage solid waste programs and negotiate agreements such as what we're bringing to you this evening. And also Representatives of Waste Management of Alameda County are, are present here in the council chambers, and would be happy to respond to any of your questions as they may come up. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Garth Schultz, who is the President of R3 Consulting Group, and he has a presentation, and then we all will be happy to respond to any of your questions or comments.
Thank you, Jeff, Mayor, Pro Tem, City Council, and WEMAC, and folks at home listening. Garth Schultz with R3, we're glad to be here this evening and kind of help resolve a matter that's been outstanding for some time, we can go ahead and go to the next slide. I want to thank Sarah Koplovitz with R3, who's done a lot of the, the groundwork and legwork in getting it to this point with hundreds of pages of documents over the course of the last several weeks, and then the WEMAC team, we were really able to come to center on a bunch of issues during the course of this negotiation. So here's what we'll cover today, in the spirit of recycling, many of the things that you have before you in this presentation, you have seen before, and are recycled, and thus I am going to go somewhat quickly over them, but I want to have them up in case you do have questions, and if you do, please stop me, so that we can dive into issues that may be of concern to the council. We'll go ahead into the next slide. So just a reminder, a recap about why we're here, you as a public agency here in California are the end of the line in terms of the provision of solid waste and sanitation services for health and safety, you've contracted with WEMAC Waste Management of Alameda County for quite some time, since two thousand and eleven, and these most recent agreements, you do have two agreements with them currently, Collection Services Agreement and a Disposal Agreement, also called Post Collection Agreement, so everything that happens after the trucks collect the material. Some of the background context, one of the reasons that negotiating a new agreement was important on the city's side was securing programs and services to meet the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three, a climate reduction, or climate greenhouse gas reduction law, and as Jeff already covered, this has been an ongoing process for, for some time, including early negotiations and a competitive procurement process before getting to this stage this evening. So you've, you've done everything you can as a city to get the best deal for your residents and your businesses. Next slide. Just a little bit of the additional context on SB thirteen eighty-three regulations, it affects everybody in the state, and it does require some new programs and services. Those specific that we have secured here for the city are standardization of container colors and labeling, that's something that will happen early on in this agreement term, and then some important operational kind of observation services, monitoring containers for contamination on a periodic and regular basis scheduled through the state law, and then providing help to especially the, the larger waste generators as individual customers, commercial and multifamily dwellings, who just tend to have more overall waste per account, and have also conditions of service that mean they have a bit more education, a little bit more outreach and handholding that's needed, and they're also providing that, or they will be providing that service through the new agreement. Go ahead and go to the next slide. In terms of financial considerations, what we'll have to share, and you've heard before in prior presentations back in November, and towards the end of this presentation, changes in rates, I mean, one of the take-home messages, we're getting new programs and services for the city and for residents, but that also is coming at a cost, and, you know, one of the reasons that rates are changing, going up as a result of this agreement, is that the existing agreements that WEMAC is providing service under don't provide adequate financial resources to cover the cost of providing services, let alone the new programs and services under this agreement, and there's some important reasons why. Some of the cost inflators or, or revenue inflators on the rates for them haven't kept up with inflation, the trucks just continue to get more and more expensive, I helped Sister City secure some of those recently, and they're costing half a million and change, if not more, and that will only become more onerous as we face new lower emissions and zero emission vehicles in the future. As we reported previously, you know, back in two thousand and seventeen, the commodities market for things like paper and fibers and metals and was high, and there was a net, you know, or at least a, a partial revenue offset to rates that was coming from that, and that has since changed on a global commodities basis, and it's not coming back. And then there's things like the SB thirteen eighty-three state law and other laws that are driving up the cost of doing business, so that's, it's, this is not a set of circumstances that's unique to waste management, it's not a set of circumstances unique to Albany, we are seeing it here throughout the state, but it's really kind of, as we face a new agreement and kind of a, a change, a milestone pivot point here for the city, we're seeing a market reset to those rates. Next slide. So then these, these next set of slides, except for the ones at the very end, are a recap of what you see in your staff report, and a recap of what I presented to you back in November, so I will lightly cover them, and if there's any that, have some, you have questions around, feel free to stop me, and we will address a couple in particular that were the subject of council comment back in November that we've made adjustments to, and we'll talk about how. The take-home message here for folks at home is these are two, or it's a new fifteen-year collection service agreement and an amendment to the disposal agreement to make those co-terminus and expire on the same date in two thousand and thirty-nine. One of the reasons that we negotiated a change to the disposal agreement, though it had an existing termination date that was further out in the future than the collection agreement, was specifically to create the opportunity for the city to test the marketplace again with both of those agreements at once. One point of feedback the city staff had heard in the prior request for proposals, competitive procurement process, was that that was a barrier to other collection haulers proposing here in the city. So it extends the disposal agreement, there are also other amendments and changes to the disposal agreement, mostly to make it consistent with the collection agreement, and address definitions and other items, we'll cover that in a later slide, but so much of this is around the, the new terms and conditions for SB thirteen eighty-three, new programs for residents and ratepayers, protecting those in financial need, and then of course, addressing the, the fair and reasonable rates to be able to cover all of this. Okay, so bottom section here, top six points, these are the SB thirteen eighty-three program services and infrastructure, I mentioned new containers and labels, this, you know, the new containers and labels will be the most visible part of this to residents in particular, change over sometime very early on in the term, you know, anticipated in two thousand and twenty-five, they do have to go out and order the new carts, but what is currently, and I believe I describe it as maroon, I don't know if Waste Management calls it a different color, but at the maroon, garbage cart will become a gray or black garbage cart to match state law, and the gray recycling cart will become a blue recycling cart to match state law. Fortunately, the green yard trimmings or organic spin is already consistent with the colors, but there also will be some labeling adjustments to meet the state law there. So does a couple of really important things, transitions that all at one time, rather than having that intermixed over the course of several years, which is the case in some other communities, and it's also, you know, making this consistent with a lot of what else is happening in Alameda County in terms of others transitioning over to those new services, and El Cerrito just recently went through this process as well, so folks will start to understand and identify cart types and commodities by color here soon. There's a, there's a bunch of additional pieces here in terms of providing compost, more outreach and education, food pails available here at City Hall for pickup and coordinated by the recycling coordinator that WEMAC is providing, the contamination monitoring, which I mentioned earlier, which is using an innovative smart truck system that Waste Management will employ, and then just more data, more details, more things for staff to report up to the state as a part of annual reports to the state. Okay, next slide, again, feel free if there's things that come up. Service and sustainability handments, the next tranche, it looks like one of my bullets got off, so that should read seven through eleven. Full-time recycling coordinator, and I'll come back to that in just a moment, more fiscal resources for provision of outreach and education, and then items eight and nine here, bulky item, so bulky items are currently provided to single-family dwellings, a pickup for things like extra waste in bags, or a furniture, or a mattress, or something like that, you can call Waste Management, or order it online, I believe, I don't want to misspeak there, so Virginia will correct me later in her comments if need be, and then also this planned transition to zero-waste emission vehicles, California Air Resources Board did implement Clean Fleet regulations, those apply to Waste Management's fleets, but also we secured within the agreement a provision where they will employ those here in Albany as soon as they do it in another major Bay Area city, which, which should get you kind of ahead of the schedule on that. So returning to the full-time recycling coordinator, the very top line here, so this is, it was a subject of conversation in the November meeting, we do have a later slide, because we do have some changes to the draft, or the final draft collection agreement that was a part of the packet, just to ensure that some of the council's intent was better expressed in the agreement, but can, you know, what you were, what you were seeking was an ability to monitor the performance of the recycling coordinators, to make sure they are adequately or, or, you know, highly successfully working with commercial and multifamily waste generators to subscribe to more recycling service and organic service, make sure that's adequate for their needs, but not overly adequate or being upsold. So you have now the ability within the draft agreement, and we'll share the new language that was agreed to, to both review that performance and take back the service, if that's something that the city staff were to desire in the future, and have that funded by Waste Management, so we'll cover that a little bit specifically later. Moving into- Moving into city service enhancements, so there's, these are enhancements to supplement public works type functions. So collection of abandoned waste, AKA illegal dumping within the community. I forget the exact number of pickups, but those are included in the agreement, but it's an enhancement to what you're getting today. Provision of recycling collection services and organics and solid waste at city events. And then this new provision, which is the ability for the city to call twice during the term and have it paid for by Waste Management, a wholesale performance review. And the whole, what we mean by that is it's looking at billings, it's looking at operations and customer service. It's really kind of to look at their fulfillment of the terms and conditions of the agreement in totality. That's somewhat different than, say, a review of regular performance for a recycling coordinator, which you'll be able to do without triggering that full performance review clause. So, you know, greater level of ability to secure and ensure performance by the contractor and also more support for your own public works collection operations. Next slide. Okay, so those were the kind of the 15 main programs and service additions, and then these come at a cost. And now we'll talk about the changes to rates, starting with residential, which is those properties with five or sorry, four units or less on them. And then we'll go into multifamily and commercial customers. And these slides are virtually identical to what you saw back in November. Those outcomes haven't changed, except in one case, which is with respect to the 10-gallon garbage service. When we, when we were before you, excuse me, when we were before you in November, that was originally proposed to be discontinued as of May 1 of 2024. Council requested more time for those less than 400 at this point customers to be, you know, kind of prepare for and transition towards, you know, a higher service level like the 20-gallon. So we did secure that through negotiations, subsequent negotiations with Waste Management. So they will now have a full year from the effective date of the agreement to plan on that transition. So that was extended, and you'll see it in the table below. They would go from a rate today of 2231 to 2856. So a modest change for those customers. A new introduction, item two on this list, is the provision of a low-income discount. Those residents who are enrolled in PG&E's care program would also then be able to provide evidence of that to Waste Management and receive a 25% discount on their bill. And that is for those in units four and under. There's not really an ability to do that for multifamily dwellings because it's the property owner typically or the management company that pays for those services for everybody within that dwelling, unlike residential units, which typically pay for their own service individually. Importantly, and you heard this in November, this proposal does change the 20-gallon garbage service from something that was, you know, candidly somewhat subsidized in terms of the rate effect and bring it up to providing the cost of service. That's now set at 90% of the 32-gallon rate. And beyond the changes to the 10-gallon and the 20-gallon and the low-income discount that we've discussed, all other residential rates for garbage service, which is just one bundled rate covering your garbage and your green waste and your organics and your bulky item collection, it's just on that one, that one service level, those will all be changed 28% effective May 1. And you can see those changes here on the slide. Okay, multifamily and commercial rates, similar story in terms of 28% change to the base garbage rates, but then a slow and steady introduction of charges for the other containers. So unlike the single-family dwellings, these rates have never been kind of construed as bundled. They were garbage rate, a separate organics rate, which has been for some time 50% of the garbage rate, and then recycling provided free of charge. In this new agreement, the cost of collection and processing and disposal or recycling, whatever it may be, of the blue and green containers will start to carry its own charge in order to have those cover the cost of providing service. So garbage rates will increase effective May 1. Coming up in December 1 of 2024, charges for recycling service would be introduced at a half of the garbage rate, which is the same for green containers today. And then over the course of the following two years, those will step in and become 70% and then 90% of the garbage rate. And you can see in the chart here, and I corrected the error that was in my chart from last time, is what the effective change would be. This is kind of skipping over the May 1 change in the garbage rate. It's just showing you where folks are at today and then where they would be coming up in December 2024, assuming subscription to a 32-gallon green bin and a 32-gallon blue bin to meet both the SB 1383 requirements and the requirements to participate that have also been in place here in Alameda County for some time. That was a lot. I'm going to take a breath. Oh, can you just go back one more because I want to cover the bottom? Thank you. So roll-off rates is not your standard weekly collection of carts or dumpsters. This is the larger institutional-sized customers. These are not, you know, they may be construction projects, they may be compactors, they may be pulled out of larger grocery stores or some of the multifamily dwellings, but they're not every week or every two weeks typically. They're on-call, but those will also see a change in the garbage haul rate and start to introduce a charge for recycling and organics at the garbage rate. So unlike the multifamily and commercial rates will be stepped in, these will just start to be all at the new rate effective in May. And the rationale being that is a truly kind of uncoupled service, whereas with commercial service, you want to ensure that customers have garbage and green and blue all in one place with something like a roll-off rate that's usually as a supplement to a regular weekly service provision. Next slide. So going forward in the future, what will happen? Well, basically what's been happening for the last 10 or 15 years is the application of a refuse rate index adjustment methodology, which has been in place, and it's averaged a very low rate of rate increase since 2011. So, you know, you've got these first sets of adjustments coming in as described in the prior slides, but then those will just be adjusted in accordance with market index changes with a cap of 7.5%. And then the new thing here is a floor of 2%. And I don't believe you've even really been below 2% very often in the 15-year prior history of this agreement, but it is to protect against the idea that potentially those indices could go to lower amounts. This is standard in the industry, and it's also important to understand that it's not a cost-based adjustment. It's really just a control of revenue change and rate adjustments based on external factors, not what's really happening in Waste Management. So they, you know, except in the case of an extraordinary change in the marketplace, they don't have the ability to come forward and say our costs have changed. Customers will also see, and this is only going to be applied, you know, in cases of folks, me being habitual, contaminators of their containers, meaning placing garbage in their green bin or their blue bin, or if they're overloading their container too much, Waste Management and then utilizing its smart truck program will first issue warnings, but then start to levy penalties for folks that just have that happen too often. The idea here is behavior change. This is not a, not a revenue generator. It's really meant to be, you know, hey, look, we've given you the warnings. Now you really got to start to change how you're participating in these important programs. With that, there is also this provision in the agreement that will allow them to upsize those who have habitual overages. So if somebody's in the 20-gallon container, but they're trying to shove 64 gallons worth of garbage in it every week and stomping on it and it's still coming out the top, after a certain period of time, they're going to have the right and the ability to get them to the service level they really should have. And then finally, and I'll take a breath, right now in the existing agreement, Waste Management has the ability to work with the city to enact special assessments for residential customers for units and under in the event of bad debt, non-payment of bills. So that's been a process in place for some time. The agreement, the new agreement would extend that to multifamily dwellings in addition to common, single-family or, you know, multiplex, fourplex-type residential dwellings. Okay. How are we doing so far? Questions? Okay, all right. And then, so separately, there is the First Amendment. So you have two, you have two items before you, the new collection agreement, which is 100-something odd pages, and then a shorter First Amendment to the disposal agreement, which is, you know, one, resetting the tipping fees, meaning the costs to process or dispose of the collected materials, setting those to market costs. Though those are changing, that's all included in the rate adjustments I've already framed. So this isn't something that's additional. Those rate adjustments are partially paying for this change to market costs for the tipping fees. And why weren't they at market cost? Well, the RRI index in that agreement really kept those rate changes stable while increases in labor and capital and other expenses on Waste Management's side exceeded the changes in the revenue over time. It also extends the term to be co-terminus. I've already mentioned that. That's an important part of the strategy here. And then aligns definitions and aligns other terms and conditions with the collection agreement. And we do have one other reportable kind of change to that amendment as well. Okay, great. So now we're in the new stuff. So we do have three, really, I think, four sets of just minor changes in language proposed for the council. This would change what was in the packet, both for the collection agreement and for the First Amendment to the disposal agreement. This first one is to better effectuate and clarify that if the city does want to take over or employ the recycling coordinator position on itself, say because of just interest or you have findings that they're not preventing up-selling of services effectively, which you will have the ability to monitor over the course of time, which I'll get to below, you would then be able to leverage the city-requested change in scope, part of the agreement, and take that in-house, and they would pay you for a revenue stream to be able to cover that service. So that's now explicitly stated. It's just adding a new section, 6.4.1.8, on page 22 of the agreement, to that existing list of the types of changes that would trigger the city's, you know, interest in this. And they've, they understand that, they've agreed to this, and they also understand that that, you know, is a possible future that the city could enact. And then separately, to the quarterly reporting section, would add a new type of or content for quarterly reports that would be effective for roughly five years, which would be a report in, you know, workbook format of changes in service levels. So WEMAC would provide that workbook with the quarterly reports demonstrating all accounts that have had a change in service level and what the original service level was and what the new service level was. And that'll be a tool for city staff to be able to look at. And it's not a perfect tool because it will, it will capture all changes in service levels. But that combined with monthly meetings between the city staff and WEMAC staff and the recycling coordinator and reports that come forward around recycling coordinator activities will comprise a pretty good record that staff will be able to use to ascertain whether that's a functional, whether it's really meeting the intent of increasing diversion and decreasing solid waste garbage generation here in the city. So those are two, two changes to the collection agreement that are a part, I believe, we intend to make part of the hopeful council action tonight. And then separately, and this is one that came up just in final review by city attorney team, was some corrections to the force majeure provisions in the disposal amendment. The intent had been to kind of align the force majeure provisions between the two agreements, but there was a little bit still needing to be resolved at the time that the packet was published. So just for those of you that, you know, aren't familiar with force majeure as a term, it's applicable when there's an unavoidable delay in performance. And really, the intent here is to clarify that Waste Management is not excused from performance for labor actions that would last longer than seven days. Do I need to, am I blocking your view? So there's section 1.9 of the amendment clarifies in blue below that it shall not include power outages, fuel shortages, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The language in black is the existing language in the packet, and then the sentence below is the added sentence that was agreed to, again, by both WEMAC Legal Counsel and City Attorney. So clarification there. And then separately, in section 9.1, which is then, you know, describing, and this isn't the entirety of that section, it's just the sentences that have been updated, clarifying, you know, when either party is excused from performance. So you can see underline in blue as the additions and red and strikeouts as deletions. And I think if there are questions on this, I'll defer to the city attorney. And I believe, okay, homestretch. You've seen these charts before. This is just a reminder, everyone here in the room and at home always want to know, well, what does this mean in terms of outcomes? Where do we stand in comparison to our neighbors? So you can see towards the middle of the chart, it's the current city of Albany rates for 20-gallon, all the way up to 96-gallon in the back row in orange, or I guess that's a yellow. You can see the city's current rates and where the city's residential for units and under rates would be upon approval of the contract and the new rates taking effect in May. One point of clarification is I didn't update this for any changes in rates that have occurred since November when we spoke to you last, and that's always going to occur. As soon as we publish one of these, it's already out of date because somebody's taken action somewhere to increase these. For instance, I know El Cerrito's went up modestly. You know, Union City is going to be considering something here probably pretty soon. So there'll always be some shifting. This is your market reset moment, so you're going to be, you know, somewhat towards the right side of this chart for the first year or so, but I think gradually moving more towards the middle as everyone else goes through this same process in the next 15 years. So that's the residential comparison. And then on the commercial comparison, similar story, somewhat towards the middle of the group today. And then upon council action, should you go that direction this evening, a little bit of a jump over to the right between Oakland and Castro Valley. And then finally, so for those ratepayers looking at rate adjustments and looking at the percentages and the dollars and wondering, what am I going to do? There are some really viable and important strategies that virtually everyone can employ. Right sizing your garbage in recycling and organics, you know, take a look in your containers, see how full you're making them every week. And if you're not filling them up every week, that's a pretty good sign. You can downsize to a smaller overall size. That's presuming no change in consumption behavior or waste generation behavior. So from there, and this is typically true in businesses where waste can be, you know, part of a system design, looking to reduce your overall waste streams, we can also do it at home. And then also making legal arrangements for alternative handling of things like recyclables and organics. So, you know, those businesses say that currently subscribe to collection of stuff like cardboard, which is a very recyclable material. They could make arrangements with Waste Management or some other entity to donate or sell those materials. The caveat here is you can't go around paying someone else to collect your material. That is an exclusive right here for Waste Management in the city. But in terms of donating or selling things like your recyclable commodities, that's something that is excluded and can be used as a strategy to mitigate changes in rates here. And then finally, this is the requested action, the recommendation authorizing the city manager to execute these new agreements with the changes that were brought forth and shown on the slides this evening. With that, I am here to answer any questions you might have.
Apologies, opening it up to questions from council? Just checking first.
Sure. Could you go back to the force majeure slide, if you would, just so I can read the existing or the prior language versus the new language?
So this is just an addition of a sentence.
Right. Oh, it's the addition of a sentence or is it a replacement of a sentence?
Addition of a sentence. So the language in black just below the section 1.19 header, that's existing in what went out in the packet. And that remains. It's just the addition of the second sentence, which is to clarify further.
Just trying to process this in real time and maybe, maybe the city attorney wants to weigh in. I mean, it seems like the existing sentence says that power failures are force majeure and the second, the new sentence says power failures are not force majeure.
I think we even added less than what's showing on that screen. So what we, what we really added is the reference to exceeding seven consecutive days. And then we state for clarification, seven or fewer consecutive days of labor actions qualify as force majeure. So we just really wanted to specify that seven or less is force majeure. More than seven is not force majeure. That was the real crux of what we wanted to clarify.
Okay, so if that's... So if that's... Okay. But, so is the, is the language on the prior slide, is that actually in? Because, I mean, like I said, it's, the first part says power failures are force majeure, and the second part says they aren't.
So I think power, I, I believe power failures is, is separate from the labor actions that we're referring to.
Right, but I'm just saying, the second part says
I see.
Force majeure shall not include power outages, whereas the first sentence says, any riots, so on, so forth. Power failures are force majeure. So I'm trying to understand.
I see what you're saying. You're, you're trying to reconcile something that we didn't even address. So give me, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. Because it seems like power failures should be force majeure, unless you have some control over PG&E.
In this case, I think there may have been a red line error in creating this slide, so.
Okay.
Let me, I'm going to pull that up. I'll just need a moment or two to do that.
Looking for any other questions or comments, sorry, questions from council?
I have another question that can occupy time. So I think I understand that the agreement as written provides for delivery of 300 cubic yards of compost to the compost hub, and maybe another 100 cubic yards for distribution and events, something on that order. I don't remember what the mass of a cubic yard of compost is, but it's less than water, if I recall correctly, or thereabouts. So it's like a ton or less. I think Albany's SB 1383 procurement requirements are around 1,100 tons, equivalent of, if it's in compost, and then twice that if, think if it's in mulch. So this would not cover the entire procurement requirement, if I'm recalling the numbers correctly?
I'm not recalling the numbers, but you, you have the concept correct. That's right.
Okay.
And, and it wasn't intended to cover all of it, because there are other activities currently at play. And Sarah, I don't know if you have an answer to this. Sarah has also been working with staff to evaluate the city's steps towards fulfillment of that, both enacting a plan for how to fulfill completely, of which this is one component, and it was included in that assessment.
Yeah, and I'm, in asking the question, I wasn't implying that it should cover it all, just trying to, to clarify for my sake, so that the city will be needing to expend funds to cover the rest of that procurement and distribution, which I'm highly curious about, and how much that's going to cost. Thanks.
So back to your original question, Councilmember Jordan. This is the, this is the corrected version.
Okay. And so if you, can you scroll down? Okay, so it, I see, so it just removed. Force, so, so it does say force majeure shall not include power outages. Oh, I see. So this was kind of a inherent contradiction in the, the draft prior to the addition.
Yeah, I, I think what happened is that there was a, an, the draft that went out in the packet has the red line strikeout down below.
Yeah.
But in the discussions today, it was a reversion back to the original agreement terms, and I didn't track that and make that slide.
As you can tell, I did not read the entire draft. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. And with that, I don't have other questions.
I seen, thank you for the presentation. I seen in the presentation, there's the mention of implementation of waste management, smart trucks. I'm always, always concerned about privacy, safety of folks. And I know on your website, it had highlighted that information is never shared. I live in a house with a 13-year-old who's always on TikTok, and I've seen some interesting videos of those, that information shared. And anyone who's savvy enough knows it's not that difficult to extract metadata. One content like that is shared out to, to the internet. And I'm just, I'm just curious. I know this is highly technical, and it's okay if you don't have an answer or information, feel free to email it later. But what process or protocols are in place right now to protect people's information or to make sure content like that isn't dispersed out to the internet?
And I'll defer to the waste management team to answer that directly, as they'll be the experts in how they're handling that system.
Not seeing any other questions from council. We'll open it up for public comment, and I'm going to guess we're going to go straight online since.
Hi, we have a, we have a question on, we've been, we, many years ago, we asked to get a smaller container because we done, didn't even, we didn't even fill our container halfway. So we were given what we thought was the smallest container. Then we got a bill recently, this was several years ago, got a bill recently saying that we didn't have a, because we didn't have a 10-gallon insert, we were now going to be charged like almost twice as much because we didn't, and we didn't know anything about a 10-gallon insert. We thought we had the smallest one. We don't even put it out every week. So I just had, I don't know if you're the person to ask about this, but we wanted clarity because we're very confused about that. What we'd like to do is have the very, very smallest one, or only be charged half as much, because we don't, don't even put it out every week. But we, that's our question, is the clarity about what is a 10, what is an insert? How do we get one? Why are we suddenly charged more? Why all these years will we charge one price? And how did they happen to notice? We, I, I just don't understand it. So that's our question. What?
No, and no charge, is there, I don't know if you missed this or not, but is it possible that if you don't put out any bins on a particular day, you could not be charged at all?
Right. We, we frequently don't put it out, we usually put them out every other week.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, council. Thanks for taking my comments. Good comments and questions from the last member of the public. I'd also like to understand the answers to those questions. Also, good, good catch on the verbiage. I suggest you don't vote on this item until you have the exact verbiage in front of you and verbiage that is not contradictory. That's, that would be concerning of me to see errors of this type in something that you're, is going to be, going to have, is going to be in place for, for quite some time. And then finally, I also was wondering about the, the recycling and green waste bin size. I also try to have a waste bin of the smallest size, and I believe I did have exactly what the previous member of the public was talking about, a 10-gallon insert. If it gets swapped out with a 20-gallon, I believe now. And so I am also wondering if I can go back to a 10-gallon, and if the size of the green waste and recycling containers can also be reduced to save money. Thank you.
So I'm not sure if, perhaps we could get some answers on biweekly payout pickup and cost savings potential, or why there isn't necessarily a cost savings? I think I know the answer to this, but I'll let you answer that one. And then this question about recycling and compost, can those sizes be changed? And will that save? I'm assuming the comment was about four-unit and smaller buildings, so residential.
Yes, so I can help with those questions. So first off, the question around the 10-gallon insert. So waste management periodically evaluates the containers on collection routes. The original 10-gallon container that had been in place here in Albany for many years, and I had one of them as well, was the same size as a 20. So the entire body of it was a 20-gallon container with an insert that was placed inside of it to restrict the volume to 10 gallons. Those were either, you know, falling out or removed, hard to know exactly what, but they periodically do an assessment of containers that are out in the field to ensure that the container that's present in the field, if there's any discrepancies between that and its billing system. So I think what is referenced by the caller is, hey, we thought we had a 10, they were probably being charged a 10, but upon that reassessment or that field condition verification, waste management looked and said, well, it looks like you have a 20 to us, and made the change to the 20-gallon service rate. In terms of going back, the intention expressed in the agreement is that the 10-gallon service isn't being offered to customers, and there's now just a phase out of existing customers over the course of the coming year, with that service being ceased May 1, 2025. So at this point, that's not a service offering that would continue to be offered going forward. Now, in terms of putting out every week, that is not something that's available here in Albany. I mean, folks are welcome to put it out periodically as a way that suits their schedule, but there's no real mechanism to change billing services for folks putting out every week or every third week or every fourth week. This is something that's been evaluated by a few Bay Area cities and piloted over the last seven or eight years, because this question comes up somewhat regularly. Operationally, it's very, very difficult to establish that level of tracking. Really, to do that feasibly, you have to schedule the entire city where, hey, you're week A, you're week B. And when those have been piloted, there's modest changes in cost. You're still collecting the same amount of waste, right? So you still have all the same post-collection costs that you would, and you still have a truck, and you still have a driver. Really, the cost changes that you would see on a citywide scale are really around shortening the time in the field, and it's a shortening of the time to collect that much waste. So the cities that have piloted it haven't gone forward with it because the cost savings were fairly minor, and the, the perception of customers of no longer having the service, the weekly service that we've all become accustomed to, is a, is a drawback. So that's not something that's available here, and candidly, it's not really something that's available anywhere in California that I'm aware. And then in terms of recycling and green waste container size, in four units and under residential service configuration, it really is a bundled service rate. So whether you've got a, a small green bin or a larger green bin, you're still going to be paying the same rate to waste management. You know, if it's a matter of storage access or accommodation for being able to move the containers, I do believe they're able to provide, am I right on this? Provide a different size in those circumstances? So they, so they can provide it down to a 32. So they're all, there are some alternative sizes, but they're not provided at a change in the overall rate. It's really more for, for storage ability and the ability to move those containers around safely and adequately. I believe I covered the questions.
If I may just add one thing to Garth's presentation. For people, until this new agreement, assuming the council takes action, until a new agreement is effective, we are, we do have a mechanism in place to maintain the 10-gallon rate, because at this point in the process, the 10-gallon insert's not being replaced anymore. So if someone has any questions about that, they can either call Waste Management Customer Services or call our offices in Community Development Department. We'll help make sure that connection is made. Again, at the, upon the effective date of this agreement, that option will go away, but at least for the, the relatively brief period of time that this has been an issue for some people. And there have been a handful of people who have had a similar situation where the insert came out and they're, they're, with, the waste management is honoring the contractual agreement to provide 10-gallon service, even if it's not actually 10 gallons for the moment.
Thank you for that clarification. Bringing it back to council for comments and discussion.
So the extension of term for this, am I correct? This goes until 2039? And based upon, you know, our trends and everything going forward, is that we're supposed to be reducing the amount of waste that we're putting out there over the years? The only, and I mean, I understand the fees, I understand the reasoning for the fees. I, I'm just, I just want to put this out there that we're putting into this contract of, of going into these fee increases, charging more for each one of the types of disposals, and then also trying to reduce the amount of stuff that we're disposing. So I'm just trying, trying to understand how this all leverages out, you know, works out at the end of things. If we're trying to reduce the amount, but we're getting charged more and the containers are going up, and what happens if, say, for example, we, I mean, say, you know, in a best-case scenario, what if we don't need the amount of services by this time if we continue to go forward with reduction of waste and, and so forth? I know it's a weird question. I, again, I understand why you guys have to charge the fees, but it just, it's something that I, it just, I have, I'm trying to wrap my brain around that, so.
So I usually try to go last as mayor, but I want to build off of your comment, because I think when, when we got a preview, I think our household suddenly realized, well, it's just three of us at home now, and we never fill our trash, our 32-gallon all the way, so we switched to 20. We didn't think 10 would work. At one point, we became just two at home. And we realized that if we were actually able to compact all the waste we produced, we would do a 10-gallon a week. Now, we are back to three at home, and it's probably going to be three for a while. And so we, I think the 20 works well, but I think there is kind of this issue where with the loss of the 10, we don't have the ability to really accommodate those who are really being conscious about not producing lost waste. I do remember in the conversations that we had back in November, though, that, that 10-gallon, if, if we think of the 20-gallon, which is priced at 90% of the 32, is you might have, even if waste management were to provide a 10-gallon, the cost to actually have trucks come by and pick things up was the expensive part. It wasn't so much the disposal. And so that is one reason for the switch away from the 10. But I, I will tell you that our household would be able to get away with a 10 when we were two, except maybe right after Christmas. But I do recognize that for those who are on a 10, it is a pretty dramatic shift to the new rates at 20. So it won't go into effect right away, but, but 2020, May 2025, that's, that is going to be a dramatic shift.
Yeah, thank you for raising that. I think Albany met its waste diversion goal, if I recall correctly, and I don't believe the state has imposed a new goal. Am I correct? I mean, it has for SB 1383, but not for solid waste? Or is there a new goal that got set for solid waste out there?
So yes, the, the city's compliant with the per capita disposal mandate originally set by AB 939, revised by SB 1016. So you've been compliant with that, I'm sure, for some time. And SB 1383 kind of changed the narrative. You're not looking at, okay, well, of everything we dispose, what percentage of it is recyclable and compostable? What it really said was, we want to get organics out of landfills so that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions and therefore, you know, climate change impacts. And so it's really around programs and services to get organics out of the black bin and reduce food waste and food scrap generation. So really, kind of. So really, kind of the end game of some of this, and I think to your question, council member, is what we're seeing is the internalization of costs that used to be externalized to these systems. So, and part of the way, you know, and I speak to councils all up and down the state around this, it's nice to be able to do it in my home city, but as we've internalized those costs that were previously externalized, we're starting to see some of the true costs of this system. And in having those cost impacts, it's one of the truest drivers, actually, of folks starting to make changes to their consumptive behaviors. And though we, in Albany and in California generally, have recycled more and composted more, the truth of the matter is, is that over the last 30 years, we've also dramatically increased the amount of stuff that we consume. So, you know, though there aren't necessarily going to be the same types of options that would reward low garbage-waste generating behaviors here in this agreement, there still is that base level, kind of fixed cost of providing the entirety of this service, and it's not just around the 10 gallon garbage can, it's the bulky item pickups and the ability to participate, and household hazardous waste cleanup events and get free compost from the hub. So it's really, you know, those kind of fixed overall costs and points of access that are being carried by some of those higher rates on what used to be the more affordable, lower-waste-generating container sizes. I hope that answers both questions at once.
Yeah, and so I'll add, I think Albany met, well, Albany did meet its diversion goal, but I don't know what part of that was from waste cycling, which we didn't know was waste cycling when we did it. So even though we put a lot of stuff in the recycling bin, a lot of that goes to landfill. And now we know that. It used to go overseas, and I'm actually thankful that overseas said, no, this isn't real recycling, and we're not going to take it anymore. And so I think the costs that are being proposed, people are over-focused and fixated on the size of their waste bin, but in fact, a lot of what's going in the recycling bin is waste. I don't know, I'd be interested if Waste Management, and I would expect you have this number, but if you do have this number, it would be interesting to know, or even an approximate number, how much of what goes in people's, how much of the recyclable, recycling bin material that is picked up is actually landfill at this time? Is it 10%? Is it 50%? Again, I don't think you have the number, but if you, like, even any broad, you know, is it a third, is it a half, if you have any idea on a broad basis?
It'll vary based on communities, but it's, you know, in the range of 15% to 25% of what goes in that container ends up getting sorted out and going to the landfill.
Right. So if that went into the black bin, which is now the burgundy bin, I'm skeptical that many people would make that 10 gallon if they did that sorting. Now, nobody wants to do that sorting because you have to, like, be a plastics expert to be able to do it. I don't do it. But I think from that perspective, I'm highly supportive of the movement that is proposed here to really internalize those costs that have been externalized. And they've been externalized, I think, from people on 10 gallons, like my household was, and I appreciate that Waste Management. As I said last time you were here, I would change my service afterwards from 10 to 20 because the insert fell out, but you did it for me, so thank you for doing that and saved me a little overhead. And, yeah, so I'm highly supportive of the direction this is going. And I want to thank staff and the consultants and Waste Management for adding those provisions in regarding the recycling coordinator. I feel quite comfortable that that has been addressed now. And those are my comments.
To clarify your comment, when you say it saved you overhead, it saved you the mental task of having to call as opposed to the overhead in costs. So you actually, you are actually paying more now.
Well, but, yeah, but it's not overhead, it's, I don't consider that overhead, that's justified, that's actually the service I'm using. So it's the mental overhead that it saved me.
Yes. Looking for any comments or discussion from?
I'll just briefly say on the discussion around the sizes and everything that we've had, you know, Mayor, I think your example is an interesting one. From the flip side of that, you know, my family went through a similar change, they, it went from three and when I moved out to two. But where I currently live, I live in an ADU in Albany, which would have otherwise be a single-family home that is myself and a young family. And oftentimes, I don't contribute a ton to that, but those containers get filled up. And I think my ideal for, and something I think we should keep in mind for this, is rather than everyone downgrading their sizes, is more people are living in some of those, and we have more diverse types of housing and some places that were previously just single-family homes and may have empty nesters, start to host more different types of people, more ADUs, something like that, and maybe people's children move back, you know, never know. So I think that's something to keep in mind, that we want to be encouraging and is another possible solution to the problem of, oh, no, we don't have enough garbage. Unless there's any other comments, I'm happy to make a motion now.
I just have one other comment. I'm curious about the donating of the excess materials, like for people who tend to run high with cardboard or cans or whatever. How does that process work with donating these materials to Waste Management?
So with Waste Management, you know, commercial businesses can make separate arrangements for, say, sale of commodities of, you know, like baled cardboard and larger volumes. Todd, you might be able to speak more specific to the logistics of that, but, you know, those with actual, like, recyclable commodities in quantity that have market value, they could work with Waste Management, or they could work with other outside parties to literally sell those items. And that typically means they have to meet certain quality standards, you need to have them adequately separated, containerized in certain ways. So that's kind of a sale-type model. The donated-type model can be more, you know, folks looking at, you know, their waste streams and say, you know what, I've got a bunch of pallets, I'm using a lot of pallets every month, and, you know, rather than throw those pallets in my dumpster and pay Waste Management for that, I'm going to make arrangements to get those pallets to an entity that's going to use them, and maybe I don't really need to sell them, and maybe they don't have a market value, but I'm going to, you know, separately kind of get those into an area of my, you know, store for, footprint, and see if there's folks that might be able to take those materials. You know, clothing's another obvious example, and that is something that there'll be some pilot programs on with Waste Management, but it's really looking at the individual components of a waste stream and making operational decisions around, is this something I can separate and segregate out? Can I keep the quality high? And is there either a reuse or a recycling marketplace where that's either sold or at least can be transact, can be a transaction, again, of a true donation of that material? So Waste Management is one actor in that market space, and there are others. I know that Alameda County Waste, Stop Waste has, you know, guides around that. So it would really be kind of up to the waste generator to determine who's the entity or what sort of entities might I donate or sell this material to. Waste Management can be a partner to them in at least the kind of larger recyclable quantities space.
And so would someone just directly contact them? Is there information on the website?
One of you want to take that here?
Yeah, they could contact us directly, or if we're going out to do visits, like the recycle coordinator, if we've gone out to visits and they have a large, a lot of it has to do with, like, large volumes of cardboard, right, where they can actually, hey, you've got enough cardboard here, you can purchase or lease a baler, bail that material, and there's the value to it rather than a cost of putting it in your recycle bin along with a bunch of other items that then goes to the transport station, to the MRF, it gets sorted, and goes through all that stuff. So it's, we're separating that stuff at the business. We have generated enough where we can make bales of the material. You see a lot of it's like grocery stores or large facilities, they'll make bales, and they'll actually sell that cardboard and make money off of it.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
I think of the example that I heard on a podcast where a local startup was collecting coffee grounds because they needed coffee grounds for their business, and that was a way for local businesses not to pay for it to be taken away, and for this startup, they got it for free as long as they came and picked it up. So, the startup doesn't exist anymore, but, sorry, that's not quite true, they were bought out, so, but they don't, they don't, they don't do anything locally anymore. With that, I will look for a motion.
I will move Resolution 2024-15.
Does that need to be with the change? Yeah, okay.
Exactly, thank you.
Can you restate what those changes we need are, just for clarity, because I don't know if I can restate them easily right now.
I think you could just say as presented tonight.
I will move Resolution 2024-15 as presented tonight with the changes suggested.
I'll second.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Very exciting to have reached this point. And again, thanks to the consultant, because if I remember correctly, it was your idea to take another crack at this many years after. It was, oh, okay. Well, maybe staff was being, my memory, self-effacing. So thank you, staff, for bringing this back and taking another go at it. Much appreciated. On the 10 gallon, so this agreement is in effect May 1st, or did it just go into effect?
May 1st.
Okay. And so people have the opportunity to call the city or call Waste Management and restore their 10 gallon service cost through?
For the period of time of, what was it, January or something like that?
May 1st, 2025, yeah. That's when I would switch over. Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for presenting tonight. Thank you again, staff, for all the hard work. With that, I would accept motions to take a five-minute break. I think we have to wait to vote on that, to take a break.
No, you can.
Okay, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 9:30. To council, and there are no Item 10 unfinished business, but we do have Item 11, new business, City Council Ad-Hoc Subcommittee to Review Applications and Make Recommendations for Appointment to the Housing Advisory Commission. Do we have a staff presentation, or is it really just of recommendation as listed?
It's really just the recommendation. I'm happy to read it out loud.
No, I think that's fine. Just to bring members of the public up to speed, when we met last, two weeks ago, when we last met, we had discussions about how appointments would happen to the Housing Advisor Commission, and council requested that we form an ad hoc committee to form a selection committee. With that, I will... No commenters in the council chamber, but are there any online? Raise your hand if you would like to comment, I see that there are eight people watching us, but, okay. So with that, I'll bring it back to council for motions or comments and discussion.
I will nominate.
So long as the nomination does not include myself, that's wonderful.
Uh, Councilmember Tiedemann and Councilmember Hanson Romero? Okay.
I will second that motion.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
All right. Just like that.
Uh, moving on to item 12, council subcommittee reports, council member reports, on appointment representation of Albany and other meetings and events. And I can't remember which end I started at last time. I'll start with Aaron.
Okay, um, I've, I've got a couple, because we didn't do this last time. Uh, on Ava Community Energy, our meeting, our board meeting last month, um, start with the good news, we elected a new chair and vice chair, uh, our member from Pleasanton, Jack Bolch is the new chair, and I was elected vice chair of the board, so that was very exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, 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 we don't, we don't. Your first warning.
We had a, a couple other minor items, some long-term power contracts, but nothing else major, we went to that meeting and it was announced, um, I don't know when exactly, but recently, our CEO at Ava is also, has chosen to resign and move on to bigger and better things, we're all very thankful for his work, but we are starting the process to find a new CEO, so that is ongoing, and I'll have updates as that becomes public, and, and we're just at the start of the process. I'll also mention that on that day, I participated in an Ava lobby day, that was very successful up in Sacramento, met with almost all of Ava's representatives in the legislature, very busy day. We also had an Ava executive meeting, uh, at the beginning of this munch, this month, where I was confirmed as vice chair of the chair, as the chair of that executive committee, and we looked at a couple things, I think the most exciting being enrollment of Stockton and Lathrip, the, the sort of rollout of that when it happens in 2025, as well as our resilience startup, uh, community-based organization grant-making process, which we are getting started. And then we had an ABAG Housing Committee meeting, where we discussed the labor standards that will be in the BAFA bond, the negotiations for that are ongoing, we are expecting more action at our meeting next month, so we'll have more defin, definitive news there soon.
Thank you, Councilmember Tiedemann.
Um, not much coming out of Gilcheck Farm, other than there was a recent event, there's a film screening for Occupy the Farm, hosted in their new facility, um, and as you typically hear or see in the newsletters, there's always compost there for folks to go grab, um, for the mosquito abatement district, catching up on a couple meetings worth, but, um, of highlight from two meetings ago, unfortunately, I wasn't present due to time conflicts, um, I was at the mayor's conference, uh, for the month of February in Alameda, but during that meeting, Board of Trustees had voted to rename the laboratory space after Jan Washborn, who was unfortunately formerly a trustee that had recently passed away, and represented, I believe, the community of Oakland. As well, we've had a couple, uh, spots left unfilled on the board, and we're in this weird, wacky area where we're trying to make sure we're recruiting and doing outreach to achieve quorum, to have our meetings, which is very important to do so. It looks like we are having some headway with, uh, getting those spots filled, though. Lastly, during our ACTMAD meeting, we also, uh, did a thorough run-through on updating the policy manual, making sure language reflected the actual work process and protocol that staff was conducting, and just making sure there's more, uh, more relevant to the work that's actually being done.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lopez. Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you. Yeah, so I attended the planning programs legislative committee of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, at that meeting, it presented the annual congestion report, I'm not sure that's the technical term, it's required by state law, and, uh, it was quite interesting, so vehicle miles traveled, which is motorized vehicles mile traveled, um, is up 4% over pre, pre-pandemic now, but bridge crossings are down like 6%, 7%, 8%, and so the, the travel patterns have really dramatically changed, and so there's, there's less inter-county travel and much more driving within the county, and it's more spread out throughout the day, so it's quite a, quite a change. And then, as you probably know, the, the rail systems are, you know, still considerably below, they're like half pre-pandemic, bus systems tend to be at 70% to 80%, as is the ferry system, interestingly enough, so, yeah, that's probably enough.
Um, I attended the Waste Management Board meeting, where basically they went over the multi-year fiscal forecast, um, you know, again, basically, you know, going off of the waste management contract, you know, it, and that's kind of what pushed that, you know, these questions to mind, is that they are on track to continue to essentially try to run themselves out of business in a, in a way, um, the, and, and looking at new resources of revenue, should they continue to move on forward, um, as the years progress, so, it's, it's always very interesting how much we're trying to like, reduce our waste and look for new opportunities of reduce and recycling and reuse, um, and, and seeing how the, you know, this, um, this group is, is continually trying to show that they're, they're budgeting out forecasting to reduce and reduce, to, to nothing, so. Anyway, it's, it's always eye-opening, uh, what they've got going on there, so I always encourage people to get informed, stay informed with more conservation efforts with that, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero. I attended a League of California Cities event, uh, up in San Pablo, a really wonderful event, we were at the Community College there in one of their wonderful rooms, that was a, a nice event to be at, and last, eh, last week, it was just last week, sorry, last week, uh, it was wonderful to host the Alameda County Mayor's Conference here in Albany, um, we had a really great time, it was really enjoyable to tour the new graduate student housing on the UC campus, uh, sorry, on the, in the village, University Village, uh, one of the kind of cool things about that trip was, I found out that, um, that housing is three times more, um, will provide three times more housing than the, than the university currently provides for graduates that has dedicated, so that's gonna be a, a great asset. Also found out that, uh, the, my daughter, the same company that my daughter currently rents a unit from, will be running, is building and, and running that building as well, so, um, it was interesting to see the differences between what undergrads get and graduates get, so graduates get a slightly bigger room and they get in-unit laundry, so, quite interesting. Um, I do wanna give a special thanks out to staff, uh, staff are both setting up the community center, staff are preparing everything, we had a wonderful gift bag that was given out, sorry, a swag bag that was given out, from Oak Town Spice Shop, uh, they provided a special Albany all purpose, all-purpose seasoning blend, uh, for, uh, Sustena Bar provided some handmade soap, Ocean Brew, Brew Works, Ocean View Brew Works provided some beer for each, for each person to take home, and then there were a series of items from our recreation community services department, loved the pen, uh, and a water bottle as well, um, so special thanks to staff. Let's see, um, and with that, we'll move on to item 13, future agenda items, are there anything that, like, she's, sorry, one second, um, we are supposed to, I believe, ask for public comment first. Uh, not seeing any public comment, uh, Council, uh, sorry, Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes, um, take into consideration, it's Women's History Month, and the ordinance that we did here previously, um, I think this is an opportunity for us to hold ourselves to account, and I would love for us to explore the introduction of an equal pay ordinance, uh, for the city of Albany, um, particularly because the precedent has been made in the city of Hercules, I believe they are the first city in California to do so, and I believe we have an opportunity to, uh, also keep that wave of progressive, uh, and culturally and socially responsive policy, uh, in our city as well. I'd like to explore considerations on how to permanently honor the life and work of Dr. Frank Wells here in Albany, um, and ensure that if we do so, that it's in collaboration with, uh, the school board. Uh, additionally, I would like to explore considerations of acknowledging the roots of Black Panther Bobby Seal here in Albany, uh, and what was formerly Cordenese's Village, uh, and, uh, introducing this as well, partly because I also acknowledge, uh, some of the ways in which we acknowledge folks in Albany have been great, but certainly does not, uh, highlight the inclusivity of diverse spaces and history, and we have an opportunity to correct that wrong. Lastly, um, hearing from a couple of community members, uh, in person and in passing, and I think by accident and public comment concerns about, uh, parking at the Albany Bowl, um, I would gladly encourage and welcome that we consider discussions, or at least, uh, have those discussions with working, uh, or working with relevant advisory bodies to help address that, specifically, uh, concerns or issues around, uh, lack of disability parking spaces, um, I've heard from multiple folks, it sounds like there's only a couple, and I was looking up California State, or ADA, um, minimum requirement, and it says for up to 50 spots, at least, minimum two spots, um, so if there's a way for city staff to work collaboratively, collaboratively, and maybe, uh, investigate ways in which we could address that concern, because, um, recognizing that there is, like, uh, issues with parking at the Bowl, uh, it seems like, uh, those that are most disadvantaged and most neglected are those with disabilities that do not have adequate space to enjoy our green spaces. That's it for my laundry list.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lopez. Any other comments from councilmembers? I would recommend that, um, sorry, not to get in the discussion part, but knowing that we're gonna agendaize it, just to get ahead of it, uh, when we talk about Albany Bowl parking, I would also like us to talk about potential for having event parking restrictions, uh, in particular, it was brought up when they have Albany Bowl cleanup days, uh, those are days in particular where, um, many of those who are, um, coming to help do the cleanup, it's very hard, uh, to park down at the Bowl, uh, so either, I think, as part of that conversation, it can be simply about shuttles to help volunteers, or having restrictions on parking that day. Can, is, are we able to ask a clarifying question of a future agenda item? Okay, so a clarifying question about equal pay ordinance, is that an ordinance that is intended to apply to city employees, or is that a citywide ordinance?
That is a ordinance that is intended to specifically apply to contractors, consultant, vendors, anyone that we do business with or does want to do business in the city of Albany, um, that we have some type of enforceable, uh, ability to make sure that the people, the entities that we allow to work in our city are holding themselves accountable.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lopez. Um, any other items? Not seeing any other items. So I open it for public comment to see if anyone in the public wants to add to this, do I add, open it up for public comment on the items that Councilmember Lopez, uh, Vice Mayor Lopez has raised?
No, correct me, you just said, you already did open it up for public comment?
Correct.
Yeah, then you don't need to reopen it.
Thank you. Um, item number 14, announcements of city meetings and events, please refer to the Albany, the agenda tonight, a series of events coming up in the future, um, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be April 1st, um, moving on to adjournment, so. Next regularly scheduled meeting, I said. Adjournment, so, uh, tonight, I ask that we adjourn in a slightly different manner than I have typically done, um, as a group. Tonight, we are adjourning this meeting with a moment of silence honoring the life of Superintendent Dr. Frank Wells. Uh, Dr. Frank Wells, uh, is, um, we want to send our deepest condolences to his family, especially during these difficult times, and the AUST community, uh, Dr. Wells was a dedicated and well-respected leader in education, his equity and data-guided approach to ensure every student received equality issue will leave a lasting legacy in our community, and with that, I would ask that we end with a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.